We'd like to call this Weaver County Commission meeting to order. Today is the 5th day of February 2019, and we are here as a commission. We give you a welcome, and appears that we have nobody say a prayer today, so we're going to have a moment of silence open this meeting. We appreciate your respect during that time. Our pledge will be given to us by Stacy Skeen. Thank you very much, Stacy. Thought of the day is by me. We had our department head meeting today at the county, and we spent six or seven hours in meetings yesterday, the commissioners, and I just want to report to you that we're doing really good as a commission. Right now, we're working really hard to be unified with each other. When I look at the county and the departments and how they're running, you know, we're running into some pretty difficult situations right now. We got a call yesterday, and the wind's blowing on top of Powder Mountain up there, and we're fighting these things to keep those roads open. But I look at everything that's happening in the county right now, I feel like we're hitting on all eight cylinders. We're just clicking along nice and steady, and we're doing a really good job. I hope you commissioners feel the same way, because right now, I feel like the county is doing a really good job. And I thanked our department heads and those that are here today. I'll thank you again, because we're really proud of what you're doing, and very good of it. So that's my thought of the day, is a thanks to everybody and what we're doing. Very good. With that, we'll go to public comments. We always give you a chance to get ahead of what's happening on the agenda if you'd like to. So is there anybody who'd like to offer public comments today? We see none, so we'll skip item E, or we won't skip it, but we're finished with it. We'll go to item F, our consent items. Request for approval of warrants 1686 through 1690, and 436-172 through 436-373, in an amount of $647,108. I don't read the pennies. Request for approval of purchase orders, in the amount of $401,497. Request for approval of ACH payment to the US Bank, in the amount of $162,508. Request for approval of the minutes from January 29th. Request for the Weber-Morgan Health Department for approval of surplus office equipment, and a power mate. Now, that power mate's been approved one other time, so we duplicated that. Request for Weaver County Property Management for approval of surplus office equipment and furniture. Request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Weber State University for federal work on a study program, and consideration and action on our request for final approval of the LIO foul subdivision. Are there any questions, commissioners, on those items?
No, but I would like to, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Permission?
Please go ahead. But it does show our payment to Utah State University for $51,000, which shows our participation, having the USU services here in Weaver County, and the things that they do, not just with 4H, and with the Master Gardener, and all the other things that there are a lot of people that utilize their services out there. But it's a large chunk of money, and I wanted people to understand and appreciate that resource that we have here.
Very good.
I'd just like to make one comment also, as we reviewed these warrants this morning with our staff, that there was an item in there of approximately $79,000 payment for the architecture of the libraries, and it's my understanding that is the final payment. And so I think that's worth noting, as we bring this library construction to a conclusion.
Sean?
Sean, want to comment on that?
Want to comment on that?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I was able to speak with Linda Wangsgard. She said, "This is the second to the last. There is still just a small retainage, so there will likely be one more, very small payment, but this should be the last of the major payments."
So we're coming to an end then?
Correct, yes.
Commissioners, may I? That's four library projects in four years that are built under budget.
A long time.
Well, considering the north branch, the little thing there, but yes, on time and under budget, so really a great feat by that group. And our libraries are being utilized heavier today than they ever have, which is just amazing to me. The use is different, and I keep going back to the Dewey Decimal System. Nobody uses that anymore. And I'm personally really happy about that, because I struggled with that like crazy in high school and college. Me and Dewey didn't get along very well back then.
I have to admit, I'm surprised by that, too. When the county decides to spend money on libraries, I thought, "They're crazy." But like I say, they're being used more now than they've ever been used, for a little different reason. Pardon me.
You drive by those libraries anytime, if they're open, and weekends, days of the week, and it's amazing the number of cars in the parking lot. And they're not there because they're carpooling. They're there because those libraries and the meeting rooms inside the libraries, they're full. They're being really utilized, and I compliment Linda Wangsgard and the staffs out there. They do a wonderful job. They're very efficient in what they do, provide that space, and so it's a nice benefit to our citizens.
Well, very good. I'm looking for a...
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the consent items.
Motion?
Second.
And second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Action items. We'll go to Stacy here. Request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners, Weaver County, to appoint members of the West Warren Park Board.
Good morning. The West Warren Park Board has, it's a three-member board, and all three positions have expired. You have received three applications for the three positions, and the notice for vacancy was posted, according to state statute. And there will be two four-year terms and one two-year term. So you'll be able to draw by lot for the two-year term, and the other two will be four-year.
So we need to draw that right now.
Okay.
You notice there's three in there.
Three.
Okay, pull one. You notice there's two now, because he pulled one. So you're drawing for the two-year slot. Who'd you draw?
Your slot will go to Christopher Clem.
Okay. You got that, Stacy?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. So with that, Fatima?
The resolution is number five. Do you want to list the names of the people that you're appointing?
Yeah, yeah. Should. Sorry. Go ahead, Sam, Stacy.
So Doug Taylor and Joe Giordano, that'll be the four-year terms, and Christopher Clem for the two-year term.
All right. Sorry, I guess I called you a little early, Fatima. Go ahead.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the three names with Christopher Clem as the two-year term, and the other two individuals as a four-year term.
Second.
Very good. Motion, second.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
And Joe Jenkins?
Aye.
Very good. That passes. All right, second one is approval of resolution of the county, appointing a member to the Ben Loma Cemetery District.
Yes, so there, David Gordon, his position expired, and creating one vacancy, and this notice was also posted, and we received only one application from David Gordon. So he's requesting to be reappointed to the Ben Loma Cemetery District.
Any questions?
He's a fine man. I would make the motion that we accept the application of David Gordon and point him to the Ben Loma Cemetery.
Second.
Second.
Resolution six.
This is resolution number six. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
And Joe Jenkins. Thank you.
Very good. That one's approved. Thanks, Stacy. All right, next up, request for approval of a resolution of the county granting powers to an administrative control board to govern and operate the Ogden Valley Transmission and Recreation Special Service District. Mr. Barron?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Back in 1986, the county set up a special service district in the Ogden Valley to provide TV transmission services to the residents of that district. Pursuant to state code, the county commission acts as the governing board of a special service district. However, the code also states that the county commission can delegate its authority to run the day-to-day operations of the district to an administrative control board. Last month, the county voted to appoint members to the administrative control board for this district. However, there is no authority that has been given to that board yet. So this resolution would give authority to that board to operate this district under your supervision.
Questions?
No, and I would like to make a comment, Mr. Chair. I can tell you that Mr. Barron has been very proactive in getting this moving along. There were a number of years, even decades, that this board was operating without authority, and that there were potential problems to the members. I hate when people volunteer and do work out of the goodness of their heart, especially for the county, and then because we, as a commission, haven't acted appropriately, could potentially put them in harm's way from a liability standpoint. So, boy, about a couple of years ago, Mr. Barron and I set out to make sure that this was termed right. And it's met with a few challenges, but now we've got better reporting practices, we've got everybody approved, we've jumped through the, not jumped, but we've made our way through the process that the state requires for boards. I'm very, very comfortable, and I'm very appreciative of the great work you've done in making sure this group of volunteers who serve on this board are now taken care of. And so, Mr. Chair, this is that Upper Valley TV. When I first came in, I had several people call and say, "You know, there's an on-mat tax notice in the Upper Valley. I have a line item charge for television transmission. What's that for?" And I had no idea, because not having a tax notice in the Upper Valley, only down here, that line item didn't appear in my tax notice. And so we started doing some investigation, and this is kind of how we dug this up. So for years, the county had been collecting fees, or taxes, from individuals in the Upper Valley, and then making a disbursement check, but not operating correctly. So admittedly, we had some cleaning up to do, and this represents now the near completion of that cleaning up process, which has taken a little while, but it's now in good shape. So my recommendation, commissioners, is that we approve the, well, we approve this, give the control board power for operations of the Ogden Valley Transmission Special Service District.
So is that a motion?
I can make that a motion. There were some suggestions to that, but I like the wording that we had crafted originally. Brian, is that, just making sure that we're good on that? That's what this is, correct?
So we had an original draft, and then we sat down and spoke about that original draft, and you'd requested a couple of changes that require the administrative control board to come and report to the commission on a quarterly basis. And so those changes have been made in here. Also, the commission, as the governing board, still has the authority to pass the budget for this district that is not being assigned to the administrative control board.
And so, commissioners, as we've worked with 911, it's similar. This will give us authority there, and then it also makes sure that we are binding future commissions, so that this board is not forgotten in the future. And so I wanted to protect them moving forward, and that's why these revisions are there. So with that being said, I'd make a recommendation, or I'd make a motion, if you'll accept that, motion to grant power to the administrative control board that govern the operations of the Ogden Valley Transmission slash Recreation Special Service District.
And I'll second that. I have a couple of questions and comments to go along with that, if I might. So, Ryan, is this, do we have the seven members now appointed to that commission, to this board, I should say?
We do. That took place last month, here in a commission meeting.
Okay. And do you know what their meeting schedule is, or how often they get together to review the transmission, and what's taking place in the valley?
I don't know exactly how often they get together to meet. We've met with them several times in trying to work out the issues here, but as far as their role goes in administering this district, I'm not positive how many times they're meeting.
Okay. Well, I've had some experience with this board. Actually, I think I ran some legislation for them a few years back to make sure that they had the resources necessary to give a little more quality service, TV service to the valley. It may surprise you other commissioners, but when I grew up in the valley, we didn't have a lot of TV. But we were always out milking cows or doing other things, so we didn't need TV, like you guys did down here, so. But it is, this is a great group that dedicates a lot of their time, free time, into making sure that those residents of valley do have service. And I understand that they've relocated those transponders to the opposite side, over on the Wolf Creek side of the valley now, which is confusing to some people, because it always came from Mount Ogden before. But from what I hear up there, from people that are utilizing this service, it's working very well. So, anyway, Mr. Chair, I would second that.
Very good. So, did you have to use the outhouse then, too?
Yeah, the outhouse, but we were limited to, you know, the availability of that on certain times, so.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second to approve revolution. This will be number seven, right? Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
Resolution seven is approved.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. We appreciate that. Next items, number four. Request for approval of a contract between Weber County and Blue Stakes to allow Weber County Surveyor's Office to become an associate member of Blue Stakes, Devron Anderson.
Hello, commissioners.
Hello, Devron.
Hello, Devron. Thank you, first of all, for giving me a moment to talk to you about this subject that's very important to us. Appreciate your time and consideration with this. I just want to take a moment to paint a small picture of how the county surveyors' office has functioned over the past 150 years, and then I want to tell you where we're going with this resolution. In the past 150 years, we have had monuments to take care of, and we have relied 100% on our employees and on our relationships with the surveyors at large to monitor those monuments. We have done all that we can to find when there's construction activity going on, or when there's activities going on that would disturb a monument. We've done our best to find those, but as you can probably imagine, over the past 30 or so years, we have fallen way short of what, of keeping up with the construction activities and with the other things that are happening that disturb our monuments. And as you're well aware of, as I've explained it to you before, there are some areas in Weber County where we're missing more than half of the monuments that we should have out there. And as you know as well, these monuments control our property rights, for public property and private property. When these monuments are gone, we don't hear about it the next day, but 30 years down the road, when neighbors start suing each other, that's where the problems happen. So if I could draw your attention to the little flyer I made, do you guys have a copy of this? I can hand you a copy if I don't, if you don't have one.
No, we don't. Thank you.
Recently, well, last year, we started working with Blue Stakes on a plan. Other county surveyors have tried to use Blue Stakes in the past to monitor construction activity around their monuments, but it's always been an issue, because we've never been able to specialize our map for the circumstances that we're interested in. Paul Huntsman down at Blue Stakes has been fantastic to work with. He's allowed us to give him a map of just areas that are 30-foot circles around each of our monuments. So we, in this scenario, would only be receiving Blue Stakes tickets for that 30-foot area around our monuments, which makes this a manageable, doable project for us. Otherwise, we'd have hundreds of thousands of tickets that we wouldn't be able to filter through and figure out which ones apply and which ones don't. So they've allowed us to customize our map, and they went through and retroactively looked at the numbers in 2018 for us. So based on the map we provided, they said if we were active members last year in the Blue Stakes program, we would have received 4,010 tickets. 4,010 times there was construction activity close enough to one of our monuments that could possibly damage or destroy that monument. As you can see there by the numbers, only eight permits were pulled last year for eight monument locations in the entire of Weber County. That's not even a quarter of 1% of all those construction activities that we had a permit pulled for. So that's completely overwhelming to me, how inadequate our permit process has been in the past. Another number that I wanted to point out to you is, this commission's been wonderful to help us with our local ordinance and our permit process. 74% of those tickets from Blue Stakes would have happened in incorporated city municipal boundaries, where our ordinance would not have an effect. So basically, for those tickets, we would just be able to ask the contractor to please don't damage our monuments, and we'd have to sit back and hope that they didn't. That's why I would ask for your support and encouragement on our bill that's in front of the state legislature right now. SB 104 would allow the county surveyors to require permits, even for those instances that are within municipal boundaries. With that, I want to propose that, or ask for your approval, that we become associate members of Blue Stakes. This would allow us to use these tickets that Blue Stakes generates to contact these contractors and make sure that they're pulling permits when they're going to disturb our monuments, and make sure that in some instances, these permits, they will not, or these tickets will show that they are not going to disturb our monuments, but at least will know that there's activity going on in that vicinity. So with that, I would ask for your approval to approve this contract with Blue Stakes.
First question, Devron, is there expense associated with this? Because I didn't see anything on.
There is. On the contract cover sheet, the 4,010 tickets last year would have cost 3,700 and some odd change dollars. Now, in the budget hearings this past year, I told you guys of this plan, and we discussed it, and we were approved for $3,000 a year for Blue Stakes.
Right.
So we're close there. The remainder of that that's not covered will come out of my budget from other areas.
Okay, then the second question. I'm assuming by this handout you handed us right here, on the picture?
Yeah.
That somebody was getting ready to put a fence in, and they've got one, two, three, four posts in and done, and all of a sudden, they come over there, Doug, and found the monument.
Yeah, I'm glad you caught that. I was going to bring that up, and I forgot. But yeah, the very bottom, almost in the center of that picture, you can see the top corner of our monument there, that normally those are standing up vertical, and as you can see, this one's at about a 45-degree angle. When the grubbing took place to install this fence, that monument was pulled out of place and damaged, and we happened on it later. So these are exactly the kind of circumstances. Had we known about this, had they pulled a permit for this, we could have allowed them to take the monument out and replaced it in its proper place afterwards.
Well, it's interesting, there's two things I draw by this. Number one is the fact that monument got tipped over by whoever was grubbing or doing this, you know? So it shows the damage done there, but the obvious big area is, fence is in the wrong place.
Yeah, actually, if you...
And that's what we're trying to solve here.
Yeah, if you can see in the background of the picture, in the very background of the picture, there's an old wire and post fence, and it's off to the right of where the disturbed monument's now laying.
I can't see that.
The monument was in line with that old fence. These property owners were holding the fence on the inside of their property line, which is fine, but they still nicked that, grabbed that monument in the process.
Yep, they didn't just give up a few inches.
Yeah.
They gave up about two and a half feet.
That's true.
Yeah. Yeah, that's very good. Thank you very much. Devron, that's a good report. We appreciate that. So to that, would somebody like to make a...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes. Commissioner Farrar?
We approve the contract between Weber County and Blue Stakes of Utah to allow the surveyor's office to become an associate member, as outlined with that cost on the attached documents.
Second.
And I'd like to, you know, applaud Devron for his actions in this legislation. Actually, I talked to a few stakeholders when I was at the legislature last week, and it doesn't appear there's going to be opposition to your bill at this point in time. That doesn't mean it's clear sailing, but some of the primary people that could be opposed to it have taken a neutral stance, and so I think that's a very much needed piece of legislation.
Thank you.
Yeah, Devron, so we have a motion and a second. I want to applaud you also. This, you know, it's interesting, people are afraid to get involved with legislation, and you can see here, a few months ago, you came to us and stated the problem, and we got our local legislator into the office and got that signed, and he contacted you, and you guys crafted this, and boom, 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 it's gone right through. So for you, this has got to have been a pretty positive experience, too.
Absolutely. I've really enjoyed it. I'm not afraid to take the steps to do what we need to do in the future.
That's really good. Very good. So this is a motion for approval of contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. It is approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, so the next item on our list is a public hearing for consideration on a proposed ordinance to allow larger solar farms in an A3 area. This is a little different situation, I hear what they're doing, so it'll be interesting to see what Ms. Ewer proposes. So I need a motion to go into a public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we adjourn our public meeting and convene a public hearing.
Checkup?
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. So we're now in a public hearing. Mr. Ewer?
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
That's what you know.
Well, we have an application from a local, or from a solar farm company, that would like to open a solar farm here in Weber County, Western Weber County specifically. They have their site set on a piece of property, which isn't part of, specifically part of this legislation, but that piece of property is in the A3 zone. Currently, our A3 zone doesn't allow solar farms to occur. A3 agricultural is the zone. Standard definition of a solar farm may be a little bit more manufacturing in nature, but I think it's no coincidence that we often refer to it as a farm. And so it may be appropriate for it to occur in the A3 zone as well. So we don't have any tools for that to occur.
So you're trying to correlate solar farming with regular farming? Is that what we're doing here?
So not necessarily. A strong correlation, but it is production of something that is happening onsite to be sold at wholesale offsite. Definitely not the same thing, but a possibility for it to happen in the A3 zone. A few things do happen in the A3 zone that are a little more manufacturing in nature. For example, hospital, sanitarium, dog pound, dog hospital, that kind of stuff is allowed in the A3 zone, so it's not exclusive to the traditional definition of agriculture. So the question here before the commission is whether or not we should be looking at a special tool to allow solar farming in the A3 zone. We currently allow solar farming in the M3 zone by conditional use permit. We don't have any objective standards that go along with that conditional use permit, and as you guys know, if it's allowed by conditional use permit, it's allowed by right. We have very limited discretion to deny that. With the solar farm overlay zone, which is a tool that was kind of a brainchild of the Western Weber Planning Commission, the county commission would have full authority to either approve or deny an overlay. So the proposal you have before you is to change the code to allow a new zone to be put in place, which is a solar overlay zone. And it would allow the solar overlay zone to occur only in the A3 or M3 zones, and it would allow it to occur at the discretion of the county commission. So now... So an applicant would come in, identify the piece of property that they want the solar farm to go on, and the county commission, uh, after a recommendation from the planning commission, would be able to negotiate a development agreement to mitigate detrimental effects, or potential detrimental effects of that solar farm. So this does allow a lot of flexible discretion from the county commission while also enabling these farms to occur. Uh, one of the reasons why the planning commission thought this would be a better option than just allowing it as a conditional use permit in the A3 zone is because there may be areas in the A3 zone where it's just not appropriate, based on what's currently there, what's being built around it. You may not be able to mitigate the detrimental effects on all pieces of property. Um, and so they thought, well, maybe if we could address this on a case-by-case basis, or a parcel-by-parcel basis, with the county commission having full authority to approve or deny, that may be a better way of going about it than just a by-right entitlement through a conditional use permit. So, that's the proposal, uh, at hand. It's a brand-new zone we put, uh, put in place. It's got a few different standards and objectives in it. One thing that it specifically prohibits is solar farming through reflective devices. So if you're using mirrors to reflect the, uh, energy of the sun to create heat, that kind of thing wouldn't be allowed. That's the kind of solar farm you see out in the Nevada desert as you're driving by. Um, these are mostly just the panels that you see. They are non-reflective panels. They're safe for, uh, water fowl, which we, um, have a lot about west. Um, and, uh, the proposal puts, uh, standards and requirements for how many acres, uh, needs to be provided for a solar farm to exist, um, how far setback they need to be from any property that has a residence on it, um, buffering, landscaping, et cetera. And then any other issue that we may see on a parcel-by-parcel basis, we're entitled at that point to negotiate with the landowner or the proponent to get a development agreement in place to help protect the public. I think as a net, uh, uh, input, I think solar farming, uh, and providing wholesale energy, uh, through, uh, natural and renewable resource is a, a strong benefit to the public. And so the planning division has recommended approval of this. Planning commission, after we've made a couple of tweaks, also, um, feel pretty strongly about recommending approval for this. So we're asking the county commission the same.
So what, what acres did you end up on this?
We, we settled in on two hundred acres, and that was the proposal from the- wait, hang on a second. Let me, uh-
The day I was, attended that meeting, you guys were struggling with the total acres. You were bouncing back and forth, and I, uh, left a little before you finished that.
We were struggling just a little bit, and let me go back and verify. Hundred. We, we settled on one hundred acres.
That sounds right.
And, uh, to the planning, uh, commissions, uh, to their credit, they thought maybe a hundred is too much. I mean, if we really wanna see renewable energy resources established here in Weber County, maybe we wanna reduce that twenty, twenty-five, fifty. But, um, right now, the applicant is saying hundred suits their purposes, and maybe if we go with a hundred, we can kind of see how this first application goes. Um, and if we wanna reduce that later, we certainly can.
Commissioner? If, if all hundred acres is utilized to its most efficient maximum, and I know these change all the time, how many kilowatt hours can be generated from hundred acres based on the efficiency of today's solar panel?
If you turn to the very back of your packet.
What page? Can you tell us?
Let me see if I can find it. Forgive me for a second.
Back, the, I'm sorry, the back.
We're looking at, um, page, let's see, eighteen. Of twenty-two at the very back. You know what? I can't find it right offhand. Um, we do have the representative from the applicant here in the audience, and he could tell you what the, uh, what, what amount of power is coming out of the proposal that they are proposing. I don't know if that would directly translate to how much it would be if it was the full hundred acres, but at least it would give us an understanding of what this project could, uh, produce.
On page twenty-four of this report, it lists site development standards. It talks about how far they have to be back from all these different things, the height and designs. I don't see the acres there. All right.
Not that it's important. My, my only comment there is, uh, just as technology, things like computers or electronics are becoming quicker, more efficient, faster, I understand the footprint for existing solar farms is also reducing. I'm getting ahead. That's, that's good. So, what was, uh, a solar panel from five years ago, it takes up, it, well, now you can do it in, in a, in relatively less space than you could five years ago and generate the same efficiency. And I would expect, or conclude from that, that as we continue on by having this number of acres, we'll be able to become more and more efficient as the time goes on.
Yeah, and the technology is changing. There's a new technology that is just, uh, gonna be hitting the market pretty soon that allows, it's a, it's a certain kind of a fluid that will help store sunlight for years at a time, as opposed to what current batteries are-
We live in a wonderful time. We really do.
Any other questions for me?
Yeah, question, Charlie, if you would. So, uh, will this be a, a allowed use in an A3 and M3 if this passes, or just a permitted use?
Um, it's, it's a great question. It'll be, it sets up the ability for it to be an allowed use. So if you create the overlay zone, that first needs to be adopted, which is here. Uh, then that overlay zone then needs to be applied to a piece of property. If it's applied to the piece of property, then it's allowed as a permitted use. So, uh, one of the reasons why we didn't go through conditional use and just said, "Let's just do it by right as permitted", is by the time that overlay zone has been applied to the property, there's a development agreement in place that just sets up all the objective standards. So no reason to make the, uh, owner go through a bunch more hoops to-
Yeah, and I think that's wise. It's, and every, obviously, a solar farm like this will have impacts on neighbors, and so I think it's very important that the neighbors have an oppor- opportunity to come in and discuss that with the planning commission at some point, rather than, uh, have them, because we have a lot of A3 zones still out west that this could impact, uh, in the future. And I, you know, I support the solar energy. Obviously, clean energy is something that we need to embrace, but at the same time, we need to respect other people's property rights out there that haven't lived next to a solar farm.
Yeah.
Forever.
Very well stated, and I, I think that the overlay zone can help us, uh, manage that. What you'll see in the next steps, if you do adopt this, uh, and apply it in code, is, uh, we'll have an application to rezone a piece of property, uh, to the overlay zone, and, uh, that'll go through the planning commission. Planning commission will give us specific, uh, requirements that they think we need. If they recommend approval, they could just recommend denial to the county commission. And then that'll come to you guys, and you'll look at all of their specific requests for you guys to negotiate. We'll have that documented in a development agreement, and you can approve it if you want, or you can deny it if you-
Perfect. Thank you. Sounds great.
That's great. All right, Mr. Ewer, does that finish your presentation?
That does, unless you have more questions for me.
See none. Very good. Uh, this is a public hearing, so members of the community who would care to stand and comment on this, we'd love to hear from you.
I'm not related from the community. Do I just stand here?
Oh, walk right up to the podium here. And introduce yourself to us.
Okay.
Tell you where you're from.
My name is Ada Almans. I live in Ogden. I live by Thirty-Fifth and, um, Harrison, so I don't know where that is. But I do support solar energy. It's very important that we move in that area. And then I also wanted to, um, say something else other than that, and I don't know if I'm able to or not. Uh, but I had talked to Ricky Hatch. Um, he, he's not here, and I emailed him, but he hasn't answered. Um, because I see, you know, that you have certain values here, that, um, you want to serve the public. Um, and I've noticed that I, I'm very politically active, and I help register people to vote, especially people, um, that speak Spanish. And I have requested, uh, to Ricky Hatch, if the voting registration forms can be translated into Spanish like they are in Salt Lake City.
Well, we can't answer that. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to reel you out of order cause we're in a public hearing on something else. But, that gentleman right down there at the end, they're waving at you. At the end of this meeting, he can answer those questions for you.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Are there any others? Mr. Larson, you look like you're getting ready to come up here, no? Well, we gotta have somebody talk about this project.
I, I am a member of the community, but obviously here on behalf of the project. So Doug Larson with Elevate Consulting, I represent Strata Solar Corporation out of North Carolina, that, uh, made the original application for the planning commission in the county to consider, uh, having Weber County. Um, and I'm a cheerleader for this. I'm gonna use these kinds of words, embrace, uh, renewable energy projects, and I think it's kind of exciting to see Weber County and northern Utah be a, a leader in, uh, thinking through how we can best develop renewable energy, uh, projects. This, um, solar farm project, um, is moving forward well. Uh, we've enjoyed very much working with the staff uh, and helping articulate something that's not been done here in Weber County or northern Utah yet. So, uh, again, we have an opportunity to, to kind of set the pace and be a leader. Um, commissioners, if I may, just make a few comments. You were talking about, um, acreage and system size. Commissioner Harvey, you're correct, the technology has changed the size requirements significantly. Uh, the original, um, agreement on this land would have consumed, um, almost three hundred acres. System size was two hundred and eighty acres to produce thirty-six megawatts of power. Technology now has narrowed that down to, to only about two hundred and thirty acres, and that's happened in the last two years. So, pretty exciting. I hope that helps. We, as we made, uh, application for the county to think about solar farms, to answer another one of your questions, we, we took the approach that we would recommend defining utility-scale solar farm as a solar project that consumed at least a hundred acres and produced at least ten megawatts of power. Hope that's helpful. And most importantly, I just wanted to tell all of you thank you very much on behalf of Strata Solar. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Well, Doug, could you tell us a little bit is about Strata Solar, who you're, uh, representing here today? Uh, they're fairly large and have these all over the country, don't they?
They, they do. Um, um, they're one of the top five, uh, solar farm producers in the country. And what that means is just, uh, the amount of megawatts that have been in, put in place by the company. Actually, in terms of the number of, of utility-scale solar projects they've installed, they lead the country. Um, and, uh, they're a growing company. They have almost five hundred employees across the country. Uh, Utah is an emerging market for them. Um, they have a satellite facility in Moab, um, that we work, uh, with the folks out of their Moab office, and, um, they're just a significantly growing company. They have, one thing that's in, I think I would like to point out, commissioners, um, as an example, they, uh, they have done projects for Facebook. And on that note, uh, tech companies, and a term that I use, often new generation industry, which includes aerospace, an important cluster to, particularly to Weber County, are starting to demand access to renewable energy. And so having, uh, a partner like Strata, who's done, uh, business with large-scale corporations across the country is helpful and should give you some confidence that they have the power to, uh, to make this project work, excuse the pun, and, uh, certainly can sustain the life of the project. These are, projects are typically twenty-five to thirty-year, thirty-five-year projects.
Very good. Any other questions?
Doug, what's the time schedule if this was to be approved? You have an anticipated start date?
Yeah, we hope to be constructing, uh, uh, in 2020 and, and finished, uh, with construction by the end of, of 2020. We, we may, uh, do some preliminary groundwork by the end of this year. Um, that would be helpful if everything gets approved as, uh, as planned. But certainly, we, we intend to have the system running by the end of 2020. Construction period for this size is about a six-month construction period.
Good. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson, we appreciate that. All right, any other comments here before we close this meeting? See none? I would, uh, look for a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're now adjourned. How about a, uh, motion to reconvene our regular hearing?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. We're now back in our regular meeting. So now we need to decide if we wanna make a, uh, take an action on this. The public hearing.
Do you entertain a motion?
Great, I'll, uh, make a motion that we, uh, we approve the ordinance to allow, uh, large solar energy farms in an A3 zone. Or do that zone overlay, an SOZ, modify the solar regulations in the M3 zone and create standards, uh, for governing the same.
Very good. We have a motion.
I would second that, uh, and I would assume that that motion also includes the A3 as well. A3 and M3 zone.
Yep. Okay, it did. So I have a motion and a second.
Ordinance number two, Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Farr.
Aye.
Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
Very good. This makes me happy. Uh, I, uh, I'm a, a proponent for, uh, solar energy as well. Uh, you know, this is one of those deals you can see coming down the line, and you know that, uh, as soon as it reaches a point that it becomes viable, then it gets better and better, and this is one more time. We're just getting better yet, and more of our energy can come this way. So this is really good. Makes me happy. All right, uh, Commissioner comments. Do either of you have a comment you'd like to make?
I'm good. Thanks.
I feel pretty good, too. Uh, Mr. Ewer, I would have a question about you. We had, uh, oh, here a little while ago, we, uh, man, I've lost that thought. Now, what we were looking at, and you were gonna get back to us. What was that?
We're talking about, uh, out west zoning, uh, in the, uh, M3, uh, or, excuse me, M1, A2.
Oh, yeah, we had a, uh, we had, uh, somebody included in a zone change that contacted us and said that was a mistake, and he didn't want that done. And we were gonna fix it, and I told you, I'd like to throw the whole thing out and start over, and he said that really wasn't possible. What are you doing on that?
So we can, we can start over. We can't recall the decision. So what, uh, we are doing is we're working towards making a couple of minor adjustments to, uh, that zone area, maybe the general plan as well, uh, to better accommodate what that particular landowner is asking for. And we're working with that landowner. So, we're just trying to get all the details, uh, pushed through the process. Gotta go to the, the planning commission first, um, and we'll, we'll see you in a, in a, in a month or so.
Good. Well, we look forward to fixing that. Very good. Well, uh, do we have a, uh, a request to close this meeting, to go into a closed session?
Need a motion on that?
I do, for, uh, pending and imminent litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, uh, move that we, uh, move into a closed meeting to, to discuss pending or imminent litigation this time.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Farr.
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
We're now in a closed session. We generally do that in the back room. Thank you all for attending today.